I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Mesa City Council, the study session for Monday, June 17th, 2013. Councilmember Summers, I thought I saw here before. He's probably just stuck in a meeting and will be here soon. The first item on the agenda is to review the agenda for tonight's regular council Page two, items two through three C. Items four A through five B. Items five C and five D. Items five E through six A. Items six B through six H. Items six I through six P.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Higgins.
Thank you. Item six K.
Six K.
It's granting access to large, well, commercial trucks over by a charter school. And I just wondered if there's, if they're, did anyone do a safety blah, blah, blah to see if.
Actually, that one was by the charter school.
Okay.
They are, just one second here. They are, they're putting a cell tower, I believe, in their site back there, and this allows them access back to the tower across some city property. And so they actually requested.
But, just because they requested doesn't mean it's something that the city wants to say, "Yeah, it's okay to do because, I mean, if it's a safety issue, you know, someday we're going to get blamed if something goes wrong." I just want to make sure that we looked at it and that you're okay with it.
Yeah.
Or someone was okay with it.
I'll go back and verify that, but I believe we're okay with it. It's a fairly infrequent use as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Higgins?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Higgins. Yeah, this proposal's actually been on the table for about three years, and it was held up for various sensory reasons. But the access is only just to install the cell phone tower and occasional maintenance, so it's not a real.
It's pretty infrequent.
So, yeah, I feel comfortable.
Okay. Thank you. Any other items on that, six I through six P? Items seven A through eight B? Items nine A through ten B? And items, item eleven A.
Mayor, I may just briefly on item eleven A. Mr. Wesley. Since this was here previously, I believe, at your study session last Thursday morning, you had the revised site plan that moves the, all the buildings that are at least fifteen feet away from the property line. Since then, you've received copies of a letter from the applicant, Hewitt Lake, expressing concerns over whether or not there is a valid legal protest on this particular request. Do some issues with that letter. And then even later this afternoon, we received another letter that you have in front of you from the applicant explaining why, and I believe it's still a valid legal protest. Given the late date at which we received these, we've not had opportunity to fully evaluate the impact of the different letters and the different arguments. And so we would then recommend a continuance of this case in order to give opportunity to really study those and make a determination on the validity of a legal protest.
So you would continue this until the July 1st meeting?
That would be our suggestion for you, mayor and council.
Is any problems with, the yes, there is problems, or?
No, I agree, sorry. I agree with Mr. Wesley.
Oh, okay. I turn, is there any problems? And Debbie's going, "Yeah." Okay. All right. If there's no objections, then item eleven A will be continued to the July 1st regular meeting. Next item on the agenda is to hear a presentation to discuss and provide direction on a proposed future capital improvement program. Mr. Brady.
We want to review the special meeting.
Special meeting. Sorry about that. We did have another meeting. It was hidden behind this other thing. As part of the, or after the regular council meeting, we will convene a special meeting, and this is done to comply with requirements outlined in state law on how we handle the approval of our budget. And so we will have a special council meeting, which will then undertake items one A through six A, of which that will consist of conducting public hearings related to the budget and the rates and fees and service charges that are proposed. And then items on consent agenda, items three A through five A. Any questions on that? And items, then, and item six A, which is the approval of the final budget. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. And we'll convene that after the regular council meeting. Back to the study session. Now, we'll hear a presentation. Candace. I'm sorry, I'm trying to juggle four meetings here within about an hour and a half period, so.
There's a lot going on tonight, mayor.
There is. We'll get it right sooner or later.
Today we'd like to do an update, mayor and council, on the capital improvement program. Before you and in legislature is a rather lengthy slideshow. We're not going to go over all of those slides. What we'd like to do is just draw your attention to the fact, in the front, what we've done is, we have included, in our last bond election, general obligation bond election was in 2008, and in some of the department presentations, they included some of the projects that we were able to complete with that 2008 authorization. What we've done here is just kind of compile all of those in one place, so you can see the multiple different types of projects that were completed using those 2008 general obligation bond authorization. I'm just going to kind of scroll through these. So they are there for you, if you'd like to look at those. Real quick, what we'd like to do is just give you an update or a reminder, if you will, on what the CIP planning process involves. And there have been basically six different areas that we look at when staff is looking at identifying projects for future CIP programs. Some of those projects, where do we get those projects and how do we identify those? Some things are from input from citizens, for example, the I-Mesa program and the parks projects that were done before. We also look at the mayor and council strategic plan. This has your five initiatives as, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I think you're on the slide before this. There you go.
Right. Those are the strategic plan with the, with the five initiatives, the strategic initiatives. So we look to see whether those projects meet one of those initiatives, which is the priority of the council. As well as the initiatives, we also look at the council's strategic plan and the priorities that were identified during the strategic planning session that we had last February. And during that strategic planning session, the highest priorities based on the voting was Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, came out to be one of the highest priorities for the council, as well as the educational community. Neighborhoods as the place to be was outlined during that session, as well as advanced transportation infrastructure. So we take a look at the mayor and council and the different priorities that you're given to us and the feedback that you give to staff during these various mechanisms. We also have a heat initiative that was adopted by council a while ago, looking at the healthcare, education, aerospace, tourism, and technology. We look at examples in the area of projects that support economic development. We currently have identified a few areas of the city that we have some specific projects that are looking at economic development in those particular areas. Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport is one area that we're doing a lot of review for project identification, as well as in the downtown Mesa with our Mesa Center for Higher Education and the Benedictine College. Rearview Complex is another area that we're looking at with the Cubs facility going in there, as well as the Fiesta District that we're looking at for some projects in there as well. These are just some examples where we've taken projects or taken areas and done specific projects for, to produce economic development within that particular area. Other things that we look at, we also look at master plans. A lot of times, a project or an area needs to be done over time, not all at one time, both for financial purposes and also just so that for the residents within that area we can time things and we're not tearing up every street all at one time. So we look at master plans and phased improvements. So if we start with one phase and then we need to move on, and we move through other phases to complete the total master plan. The other thing we look at is also timing of the streets and the utility projects. For example, if we have utility lines that need to be replaced due to the life cycle of those particular lines, and it happens to coincide within a year or two of when we need to do a reconstruction on that particular roadway, we try to time those together so that we're making, leveraging our, our access into that, for example, intersection or street We also look at maintenance of our existing infrastructure, our assets. Roads and infrastructure and parks and facilities, building facilities, are not things that we build just one time and walk away. They're things that need to be maintained over time in order to really get the full life cycle and use out of those particular assets. This is something we look at to make sure that we have proper maintenance and then infrastructure within those. The other items that we look at is leveraging regional or grant funding. What funding is available outside of the city of Mesa that allows us to leverage our local resources in order to provide assets and infrastructure and quality of life to the citizens of Mesa? For example, one item that we have here, we look at highway safety improvement program that allows us to put some dollars, regional dollars into some of our infrastructures, excuse me, into our intersections to make them more safe and increase capacity. We also have eSmart development where we've gone into an agreement with them to do some cost sharing on some infrastructure that we need to put in down there in order to better serve their community.
And if I'm hearing you correctly, what happens is that if we don't spend some of this money, or let me put it in a positive note, when we do decide to spend money on certain infrastructure, it frees up or causes money, funds from these other sources to come in and either match or to exceed or to share in the cost of the project. Is that?
That's correct, mayor. We look at all of our, what our needs are of the city and look at the, leveraging the dollars from the region or the state or federal grants to make sure that we are leveraging our local dollars as much as possible, the more we get from outside.
There's lots of money sitting out there, whether it be through the Prop 400 or federal or whatever, that are sitting there and says, "If you'll do this kind of project, there are these monies that are, that are dedicated to that project," and it's a use it or lose it type of a thing. And in some cases, in many cases, like in a regional, we put up thirty, forty percent, and the other funds will, will pay for the other seventy percent.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. But we got to still put up our thirty percent.
Still have to put up our thirty percent, though.
Okay.
But thirty percent is always better than a hundred percent.
No.
Okay. From here, the next section of the presentation really just outlines some of the information that was given to council previously. These are just an itemized list of projects that staff has identified using that particular criteria. So we look at all of those different areas. There was like six or seven different areas that I just discussed. Take all of that into consideration, look at the needs of the city, identify and prioritize those needs, and put them into a list of possible projects. What I would like to do now is kind of skip forward to slide thirty-two. Thirty-two is our current staff recommendation for those projects that we consider critical public safety and street projects that we would like to, that we would recommend including in the next general obligation bond election. So in essence, this is a subset of the original list of projects that was provided to council earlier this month. Some of the items that the staff is considering, critical needs that need to be done sooner rather than later.
If you can, before you get going, is a subset, and staff used what criteria to come up with the recommendations?
Just, thank you, mayor and council. And I think as, as Candace goes through, she'll be able to highlight that one of the things we looked at with critical needs of infrastructure to maintain and continue, especially on the public safety side, continue communications or support services, those were critical. And one of the valuations we needed, we provided was, not only was it critical in the nature of providing some kind of redundancy or concern about failure of systems, but we also looked at maintenance costs and what it would mean if we continued to, for example, apparatus. So if we continued to use the fire apparatus that we have today, what would that cost be to continue to maintain it, the older apparatus? Most of them is nineteen ninety-nine. We've actually kept, keep the records. Fire Department does an excellent job of keeping the maintenance records for their pumpers and ladder trucks. And so they can tell us how much it costs us to maintain that apparatus each year from a nineteen ninety-nine model to a twenty-twelve model, most recent one. And so they can tell us for the average number of miles or hours of use that these equipment goes through, what the difference is in the cost. And the other thing you would probably imagine too is we could also track the fuel efficiency between the older models and the more recent models. And by doing that, we're able to determine that there is probably significant savings or that comes to the city by replacing these older models, the savings coming in the form of maintenance costs. So we look at those as a driver, so we did that. That certainly falls in the category of the fire apparatus and the helicopter, I think all fall into those categories. So you'll see those kind of analyses done.
And then I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman Higgins.
I was just going to say, there's a vehicle replacement fund that we run at the city. Do we do the same kind of concept for fire or police aviation? Those are big-ticket items, and you know how I feel about incurring debt beyond, I mean, and I think we're really careful about not incurring debt beyond the useful life of the apparatus, but it would be nice to, you know, if we could figure out how to do that kind of vehicle replacement fund for this high-dollar item as well.
Right. And I think that would be something to consider into the future, as you can consider that, what, a single piece is three-quarters of a million dollars. So the idea is having that large of a pool setting aside, we could do it. It just would take, you know, some commitment on the city to build that pool up. So we'd have, you know, that's a significant amount of dollars, I think, in the fire apparatus, it's fifteen million dollars that would have to be there in one year to draw down. But it's, it's certainly something worth looking at to try to minimize, and maybe we start out gradually to minimize the amount that we'd actually have to bond in the future for other, for future apparatus purchases. I think that's certainly worth looking at. We will work with our financial advisors so that the, or the term of the debt will be very, will reflect, for fifteen million dollars, reflect the useful life of this apparatus, and we'll use that.
Councilwoman Summers?
Kind of like my day, just everything falling over. Have we looked at leasing apparatus?
I'm not aware that we've looked at that option.
It's typically an option. I think Phoenix has looked at it.
Okay.
I don't know what it looks like when you pencil it out, but it might be something in my, well, okay.
Okay. Vice mayor?
Well, I had some questions along these apparatus. Now, maybe we get to the end and we can ask specific questions about specific items. Specific, you know, looking at the apparatus, fifteen million dollars, average price of a engine is about five hundred grand apiece. So that'd be thirty trucks if we're doing fifteen. I've kind of asked for a detail of what that actually is and never got it up to this meeting, so maybe someone can be thinking about that as they get up. And really like to know where fifteen million dollars is going, and it seems a little high, but because the, the item mentions seven apparatus, that, you know, I'm not real good at math.
In the first year. In the first year.
In the first year. So thirty million over the four, or thirty trucks over the four years. So maybe we can just work on that as we get through the presentation.
And I guess, you know, and we can come back, let's hold that and come back to that. I guess the basic question I was asking is that, based on your understand, on your explanation and what you're saying, is that we've arrived at a point, and the decision point for staff was if it was, if the cost to maintain, continue to maintain, outstrip the cost to buy new, you've basically said, from an economic standpoint, even though it may be used, it's reached its end of its useful life, and you're suggesting we buy new.
That's correct.
This isn't a matter of five years or six years or how many thousands of miles. You're doing it more on an economic model, if I'm hearing it correctly.
That's one, that was the main consideration for distinguishing all the, the other projects were important, and this kind of allowed us to determine which ones would reach the most critical that needed to be considered.
Right, most critical, okay. As a par, as opposed to, that's what I'm saying. You could use it and continue to pay that cost, and what you're saying is that even though it may have hit the end of a, of a stated useful life, from an economic standpoint, it's going to cost less to maintain certain units, therefore they're not critical. What yours, how you've defined critical are those whose costs will be greater than buying a new one, is what I'm hearing. I know that's oversimplifying it, and that that's based on the projected maintenance costs on a per-unit basis.
Correct. That's projected maintenance costs of only, not only the apparatus, but also on the street side. There are streets that if, we would consider critical in nature because.
Across the board.
Right, because with increased operations and maintenance, it would cost us to maintain those streets because they, of the condition that they're in today, we would increase by a couple million dollars over the next year to just maintain the streets as they were today if we were not to address those.
Okay, so you use the same approach across the board. I'm just trying to figure out how we define critical. And I know critical is, there's certain things critical. If you don't have a fire truck, it's a little hard to go fight fires. That's critical. But in this case, as it relates to the decision to go out and buy new equipment and possibly run a bond issue, there's also another critical. I mean, these things are important. Fact is, are they critical at this time?
Right.
Or is it something we could wait a year or two years or three years until we feel a bit more comfortable about where we are financially, if that ever happens?
Correct.
But, okay, so.
Correct. And then another factor to keep in mind that we did not look at as one of the initial criteria is also the lead time. So some of these apparatus, for example, the helicopter and the fire apparatus have a one-year lead time. So a decision we make today is actually a one-year delay in actually receiving that vehicle. So we need to look at not just in thirteen, fourteen, but we won't actually receive it and put it into service until fourteen, fifteen. So we're already going to go with one year without it, so we're always looking ahead.
All righty. Okay, so let's go on and finish this, then we'll come back to specific questions that, on line items, okay?
In the communications, in the public safety area, we've broken into three different categories. The first one is communications. The communications area, staff has identified six point four million dollars in what they consider critical public safety support projects. One area is the communications building, electrical and mechanical. These are repairs that need to be done within the existing communications building to ensure that uninterrupted public safety communications will be able to continue into the future. The other item is the fiber to particular, fiber to radio network backbone sites. This is a combination of connections to the radio network itself, which allows for redundancy and allows to continue that communication operations as it goes forward, as well as a few of the fire stations who do not have this particular redundancy backup system to the internet connection that they have, or do need the internet connection, excuse me.
Councilwoman Higgins?
Thank you, mayor. This redundant fiber optic, will this still be, like, no matter what we do, backup communication center, backup online communicate, whatever we do with the communication center? Is this stuff, stuff that will stay there regardless of what we do?
Yeah, because it's connecting the fire stations with the central system.
So it's, it's like?
It's something they could use right now. Because today, this would be a backup to the, you know, the wireless systems that are transmitted. So they're giving them a hard fiber optic, and I think they can push more data and information to the fiber optics, too.
So this is just the connectivity? Doesn't matter what system is on either side of, how you connect.
The infrastructure connects.
How you connect them.
Yes.
Councilwoman Higgins?
Is there any broader economic development that could piggyback on that? I mean, if we're connecting fire stations, is there, is there other loops or other ways that we can monetize a fiber optic installation?
So, mayor, Councilwoman Higgins, what we're looking at is really, it's the conduit through which we can run fiber optic for those purposes, and we're actually working on a, we've got a mapping, mapping out where the conduit is. Either conduit that we control or conduit that we, has been put in place under a franchise agreement that we have with some of the vendors that are out there putting conduit, and we're identifying those gaps where that if we could connect those, and then if we could run fiber, we could connect other critical city facilities, whether it's public safety. It could be an opportunity for us to do some remote control of some of our utilities that way. And then, so we're looking at, first of all, from what the city could gain from the conduit, or the, I think, conduit through which we could run the fiber optic. So we're doing that analysis right now, and then this would obviously build into that. But a lot of this is just getting the fiber optic to these sites.
The next section within public safety is the police area. Staff has identified four point four million dollars in what's considered critical public needs. One is the aircraft replacement of a helicopter. Again, this fits into that model of the cost of the operations and maintenance of maintaining or keeping our existing helicopter and not replacing it. It also has an estimated lead time of one year. So again, decision we make today is a, would be a delay before it would actually be put in service. Aviation unit hangar remodel. We also have a hangar that's in need of some, a security gate, as well as some additional space in order to make that efficient. Evidence freezer is something that the staff has identified as a critical need. There are two issues that go into that. One is, again, it is a construction item, so it is a delay in actually getting it in place. It's not a freezer, like you would think of buying it off the shelf. Okay? This is a building. And we, there is a requirement that the, that we keep evidence for longer periods of time now. Some of the evidence is up to fifty-five years. So when PD is looking at, when the police department is looking at the space they have within the freezers, they're looking at exhausting the space we have today by 2015. So if we don't have another freezer in place by that time, we would be looking for off-site storage of some nature to replace the onsite storage that we have at this time.
Councilwoman Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I have some, a couple of questions about the, the police package, and probably Chief Milstead might want to come up, because I think my questions are more directed to you. I don't, as part of the budget process, I'm not sure that we actually got to hear very much from police on the Capitol side. I think we kept canceling you out as our meetings were going very long. And I know through the discussions from the Public Safety Committee over the last couple of years, there have been a couple of items that I, I know that committee members felt were, were critical in terms of time, and the, the two large ones were renovations of the holding facility or the jail facility we have at the main PD building, which I, the facilities there are well over thirty years old, and, and they're not a showcase, I guess, for, for the community. And so I guess my question is, one, you know, how critical of a need is, is that particular facility and whether its range of importance in adding to what we have here? My second area is the, the public safety training facility where our range is, and I know we've had some issues that, or perhaps needs to be a security hardening at that, at that facility. And again, that would seem to me to be kind of a critical area in terms of timing for it. The third question is the Dobson substation, and I don't know whether the renovation costs for that facility for whatever it's intended use, if that's something that we would be looking at from our bond issue, or if that would be something that we would look at elsewhere in our budget, because I know we need at least, probably, I have heard several hundred thousand dollars in terms of carpet and paint and things like that to get it habitable for traditional police use.
What the heck did the cops do to it? Have you been inside?
So, mayor, can I add to the last one, maybe?
Thank you.
If it's going to be, and I think that's why we need to look at Dobson and how it will be used, if we move the traffic group down there, whatever. If, and I think that's why we did not include it in the sense, because we wanted to make sure we had the right plan. If it's going to require replacing the carpet, painting, maybe doing some carpentry work, that wouldn't typically show up in a bond program. Unless it's a major renovation, then we would think it would be like-for-like use, and so we would hopefully try to absorb most of that in our facility maintenance budgets that we do each year and where we come in and do those kind of improvements.
Great, I appreciate that. But chief, can you talk about the other, the other projects and their importance and needs?
Yes, Councilman Kavanaugh, thank you for the question. In all fairness, the things that really are critical that are not outlined in the proposal that you've seen, we had to do like everyone else and provide things in rank order. And we realize it's a team environment, and we're all trying to give and take to make this, the whole project work for everyone involved. Your question specifically to the range itself, the range was constructed back in the sixties. It is antiquated security-wise, and that is our biggest issue. And then also, as, and I'll talk about, we just talked about security for a minute. We did a, an assessment of the security needs out there back in 2009. We spent about nine hundred thousand dollars putting up a fence and some closed-circuit cameras and things like that. In the last several months, we've had a couple of issues out there that I would give you much detail in private, but probably not a great thing to do here. But the security, it has been in question, and we continue to try to harden that site because of the items that are housed at that particular location. Also, now that we're running two academy classes a year and we've added one classroom out there, there's needs for additional training space and also for an upgraded system for our simulated don't-shoot, shoot scenario. So those classrooms were added on that. But really, the key to that, and I would say the classrooms are a want, the hardening of the site is a need, but those are things that we have not been able to accomplish yet. The other thing that you talked about was the jail itself and the upgrade to headquarters. Again, headquarters was built in 1970. There has not been any major upgrade to that jail. There has not been any major upgrade to that jail facility in the last 15 years. They did a little work about 15 years ago. That houses, and a lot of people think the jail is that, really that big a deal, but, you know, there's lawyers and judges and police officers and jail staff that all work down there. And we need to, we actually close the jails a lot of times during the weekends because of its capacity. This actually adds a little capacity and upgrades it with the HVAC system and everything else that makes it a little bit more inhabitable. And I'd love to take you on a field trip down there, if you'd like, to see how, how it is now. But it's, it does need some work, and there, if you look at the list that's, that goes with the headquarters upgrade, I mean, it's nothing, it's not like marble floors and cherry cabinetry. It's, it's boilers and electrical and ceiling tiles, things like that, that have not been upgraded in many years, so...
And Chief, if the city would move ahead with a regional jail facility, with the need for the upgrades and renovations at the, the current facility, would that still exist because of the different nature of prisoners for each one?
Councilman, that's a great question, and I think there is some confusion in that topic. The regional jail facility would not be used for the same purpose. So this, this still is needed for our DUI suspects, for our misdemeanor arrests. It doesn't change the need for our local facility with the regional jail, which would take care of felonies, long-term people, and also for the other cities to book into as well. So this is needed whether the regional jail facility is ever completed or not.
And I, and I think you've described the dilemma that we're trying to get through here, and I appreciate what staff has done. I know there's gobs of things that are, that would be critical, because they're mission critical, and I understand that. I guess the question that I am really struggling with on whether to even go move ahead is, I'm cognizant of the fact that, that we still haven't gotten out of this economic funk we're in. And I very much appreciate the fact that our citizens are, are looking and they're saying, okay, you know, we've put off things, we've, we've done things. And that's not always a fair comparison, simply because they don't, we, we have a fire department and a police department that has to respond to life-threatening situations on a daily basis, regardless of what the economy is. And, and all the things that you do are critical. I guess the question I would have is, is not so much, are they important, but are they something that, that if you said, could they wait a year, or two years, or three years? You know, and I know that's a, that's a tough thing, but I know there's a lot of things like, and that's why I asked Candace the question before. If it costs us more to wait a year or two, it's still critical, but maybe it's smarter to do it now. I think there are some things that would qualify as critical, but, you know, if we did it a year from now, or two years from now, it may be an inconvenience, or major inconvenience, but it's not economically or mission critical from the standpoint that, that it would be easier, better, but perhaps it's something we could put on the list for the next go-around. And maybe that's, I don't know, maybe that's, that's being too general, but I, I'm really trying to get a handle on what, on what we can, what we could take to Mesa Residence now, recognizing the situation that we still are in as, as a deal. And I, I understand on the police headquarters, I think you're right. That needs to be done. The question is, is it something that we can do today? Is it something that we might be able to wait a year or two to do? And while it may not be convenient, it's, it's not going to affect your ability to put police officers on the street and do that. That's an unfair, a little bit of an unfair question, so you don't have to really answer because, but I think that's, as I understand, that's where the, where the staff was coming through, trying to draw a line, which is tough to draw.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not envious of any of your positions at all, sir. And I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and we too battle with that. And that is exactly why we tried to put a rank order to, to these problems. And if, and if I had to sit here today and tell you the one thing that's absolutely critical that's not on this list, I would say it's hardening the, the range. And again, I think it's critical, and if there is a breach in that security, it would be an embarrassment. And, but as far as those other things, could you do without them? Yeah, you can, but there's, there are people that work down there, and it is a place that they come every day, and we all want to be proud of where we work. So, but like you said, I'm not envious of any of your positions.
Okay. Candace, keep going.
Okay.
Thank you.
The last category within the public safety support projects is our fire and medical area. Staff have identified $21.6 million in what is, we could consider critical public safety needs. The first one we have talked about at length already, which is the fire apparatus replacements. Fire Department has done an extensive, has extensive research and, and data to support what it costs to continue to use the vehicles that they have now versus the replacement of those vehicles. The estimated lead time is one year on these vehicles, just as it is on the helicopters. So the things that we put together today would be for an election, the first possible election would be next November. You're looking at still another one year from that before you'd actually have something in service. It's estimated that the replacement of the seven apparatus that are currently targeted for the first year of this particular program would cost an additional $245,000 a year in maintenance and fuel costs due to the repair costs and then the efficiency of the fuel, the new vehicles are more fuel-efficient. Fire Station 203 meets one of our critical needs in the fact that the station was built back in 1957, and it no longer is serving the particular needs. The apparatus is, is very difficult to fit the apparatus within the facility. It also, location is not the ideal location that the fire would, Department would put it at. The land acquisition for this station was funded in the 2008 bond authorization, general obligation bond package. So the land for that is funded, but the construction of a new facility is not funded at this time. It would need new authorization to do that. Public safety training burn room has been identified as a critical need. The existing burn room has some potential safety concerns because of its use, its long-term use of that particular building, needs some rehabilitation within that building. A second burn room is also needed in order to separate the types of training that the firefighters go through on the different types of heat that they need to work with and different types of combustibles. So they need to add a second burn room on that one. The other area for critical needs...
Let me give that, on that one, maybe this is, I don't know if you have the answer on the, what the Vice Mayor asked about, but if you don't, I'm assuming that by Thursday you'll have a, a detail on the fire apparatus.
We do have a detailed list of all apparatus that are scheduled for replacement, apparatus by apparatus, so we can give you a detailed list.
That includes 18.
I'm sorry. Oh, there you go.
The 15.3 million, I believe, includes 18...
18.
Pieces, or, I don't know, plural of apparatuses.
Units. Big trucks.
Units of apparatus.
Apparati, but...
Trucks and other things.
We don't care.
So there's 18 of those in here, and over the period of the five years, I believe is when we schedule it, come on up, Jim, is we also, as they go further out, we take the price as we know they are today, and then we do provide an inflation, inflationary cost for the, each year out that we, that we anticipate when we would purchase it.
So 18 and about three-quarters of a million is where you get about your 15 million?
Does that, Jim, are you pretty close to that number?
All righty.
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilwoman Higgins?
No, I just looked at the 15 million that, you know, we're going to save 245, but it's going to cost a thousand, but it's going to cost us money every year to have a $15 million loan or bond. So where's that cutoff? You know, I mean, if I was looking at a replacement and I had to borrow money to replace something, you know, how much money do I have to spend before it makes sense to buy something new? You know what I'm asking? So, and I know you don't know that off the top of your head, but there has to be some cutoff. You know, how much money do we have to spend for maintenance before it is cheaper to buy something?
When you say save, I'm assuming you're meaning that's incremental cost over, over the standard-based cost of operating.
Correct, that's incremental cost.
So 245,000 is incremental cost. It will cost, if we bought a new unit and bought a, and had an existing units and ran them side-by-side, what you're saying, it would cost operationally $245,000 more to operate Unit B as it would operate Unit A.
And that's seven, remember that.
For the seven, for the seven units.
Okay.
And this is just looking at the seven units within the first year. Obviously, there are more than seven units within the $15 million. But it's also looking at, when Fire Department looks at, they're looking at their operation maintenance costs, what is, what is the offset that we're looking at on buying new versus continuing ours. They're also looking at the number of repairs and the downtime it takes, and when it goes to reserve, because remember, we don't just...
With operational issues as it relates to having equipment available.
Correct, and how often is it down? How often is it out of service that they're using a reserve vehicle versus their frontline vehicle and so forth?
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Just a couple, how many stations do we have? 20?
20.
And then how many apparatus throughout the department? Because we have ladder trucks and engine companies.
Right at 40.
40. So we're talking about doing almost half the fleet in what timeline? Four years?
It's a four-year, right. It's six years' worth of purchases moved into four years.
The only thing I would say, that seems like an awful aggressive program to take and, you know, reflecting on the mayor's comments. These are challenging times, so that's an awful aggressive program to take on in the more challenging of times. So I, I look forward to visiting with you and kind of understanding. I know you mentioned about engines that are more fuel-efficient and some of the savings, but that's a, that's a big swing, if you ask me. So, kind of looking at it and seeing how, you know, when we're looking at maybe not doing some other things, you know, we have to waver in this difficult spot of going big aggressive program on apparatus versus what we might not be able to do in some other areas. So just giving you an honest look, I've been telling this quite a bit, so...
He says something, he says something interesting. You're, you're putting four into a six-year program. Is that because of the 2008?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, basically, as you're aware, the 2008 bond was a two-year bond. The Fire Medical Department, what we did, we extended the mileages on all of our trucks. We tried to maximize those dollars as much as possible. The last trucks that we purchased were at the tail end of the 1112 budget, May of last year. And so the vehicles that were scheduled, and we have approximately three vehicles per year that need to be replaced. And that's the way it's just all kind of balanced out. And so basically, the vehicles from '12, '13, vehicles from '13, '14 have been pushed into that first year of the bond, because we're projecting 2014 bond, because we haven't been told anything else. And so there's three years, nine vehicles in that first year of purchase.
Okay, so you've, you've gone this gap where you didn't have a normal because of the timeline between the '08 bond and the next bond.
Exactly.
And so what you're saying, you're playing catch-up?
Yes.
Which is why you've lumped those in.
Yeah, and we've, and we have, you know, a really good snapshot of these vehicles that we can share with you. We have quite a few frontline prumpers right now that are running in 180s, 170,000s, and they definitely need to be replaced here in the next year, year and a half.
So if you do about three a year, then what you're saying is based on 40, about every 12, 13 years, you expect to have a complete turnover in your, in your fleet? I know it doesn't work exactly like that, but, so basically, that's, you're on about a 13, 14-year program?
Right.
If I'm doing my math correctly?
No, you're, you're pretty close. You're pretty close. We average right in 13 to 14 years.
All right, and if some of our trucks were bought in 1999, 2000, they're coming, that's why you're saying they're coming up, it would be, it would be looked at as being anywhere in that 10, 13-year type range where you're hitting that.
Exactly.
Okay.
We're bonding them for 20 years.
Are we bonding these? I thought we bonded these for 10 years.
No, we usually match up the term with, we try to do that on the, on the, on these.
Yeah, I, I think by policy and by, well, by good thing this was doing, and I know, yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was 10 years we bonded our, our fire trucks for, yeah. Because we never want to be paying debt on them.
Right, we try to, we try to structure the bonds so that the principal is being paid off earlier for those things that do not have a 20-year lifespan.
Right, we match the bond, the debt payment with the...
The debt payment and the principal, the principal payments and so forth.
With the life cycle. Thank you.
And you know what's catching up, is these units are getting busier and busier. We're running the tar right out of them. Bigger city, lots more calls, that's why we've kind of looked at the TRV, and I thought that was a great numbers that we got recently. We're taking the busiest station of over 3,000 calls, and with one TRV, literally half the cost, half the truck, half the everything. So maybe as we look, these are a big-ticket item, and maybe we need to get a little more aggressive on the less expensive way to do a more, you know, obviously busier areas.
Mayor, Councilman Weiss here brings up a really good point, and I think this is part of the conversation, we need to kind of get this, not only the timing of a bond package, the sizing, but you can tell from some of these projects that we look out into the future and try to say, okay, if we do a program this year, when would we reasonably expect the next one? I know it's hard, but it helps from a planning perspective, because if Jim thinks, knows that, well, he can get seven this year, but he can wait another two or three years with the possibility of going back out, then, you know, that we can shrink the number down and hold off the request for the other 11 or 10 or whatever into a future bond package, too. So that kind of helps us in sizing this, too. And we, we have some of these projects where we've tried to find the critical nature that we really say, or projects that we didn't choose, I guess I should say that, because we said, maybe we can wait another two or three years. But at that point, that will become critical. And if we think of it in those terms, then it probably helps us consistently apply that, whether it's in the fire or the police department, say, well, we're going to look at this as, if we did it this year, then we'll probably expect to come back in two or three years. And that really changes the dynamics of the types of projects, maybe the sizing of the project, especially when it comes to apparatus and when they would need to be replaced. So that conversation would be helpful, too, and give us some guidance and, and how we could do, and we could maybe size down even the apparatus a little bit, because instead of thinking at over a four- or five-year program, we could say, well, what do we really need for the next two or three years instead, and come up with a different value for that.
Okay. I'm not sure on something like that that gets constant use, and we don't, we don't define how those use. There's a lot of assets this city has that we can control the usage.
Right.
If you don't want your pools to wear out as fast, you don't use them as much. We, we don't determine our police cars, I mean, to a degree we do, but we're not the ones that have the needs to call 911, that our people are expected to respond to. And so in a lot of ways, we're, you know, we have to react to the reality of the fact regardless of what the economy is, as the Vice Mayor said, our, our assets are being used more and more, because we were, when someone picks up the phone and dials 911, we go there. And that's awfully tough to do a short, a very short-term and a longer-term, and, and the fact is, 2008 seems like yesterday. It was five years ago. And I think the program historically in this city was to run these about every four years, because we were on a five-year plan, and we hoped to stay ahead of the game by at least a year, and now we're behind the game by a year. So, you know, we're just trying to reconcile those two. And, and yet financially and everything, it seems like we're stuck. And I think that's maybe the problem. We seem to be stuck three, four years ago, and yet our needs haven't ended, and the requirement to really have up-to-date equipment, I think our citizens, on the other hand, would not really look too kindly if we said, gee, we'd love to respond, that, you know, the fire truck's broken down, or we don't have one available. I know we went through that two or three years ago, and we were talking about reducing the number, and it was not greeted very kindly. So that, you know, it's that balancing act that I appreciate you're trying to, you're trying to, to do the best with. So let's go ahead and finish off on streets.
Our last area is our, our street area. And in the street area, we have also classified this into three different types of projects to try to give you some ideas of where this would fit into the initial criteria we talked about, how we prioritize and look at our projects. The first one is arterial reconstructs. Arterial reconstruct is an activity that the Transportation Department has every year with a number of miles of streets that we maintain here within the city. And we have become behind on that in the past because of the recession and the downturn in the economy. So reconstruction is something that if we don't do every year, we fall behind every year. And without doing that, it's one of the items that requires additional operations and maintenance costs in order to maintain those streets if we don't actually replace those. Economic development is another area that we talked about. We talked about the Fiesta District and the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport and the downtown area and those types of things. So in the economic development area, we've identified, staff has identified about $29 million in projects that we feel would fit within the economic development area that would be of a critical nature in continuing the, the work being done within those areas. Neighborhood and safety are also things that we, that was high on the list of priorities from the council, one of the, one of the higher ones from the council session back in February. in February. Looking at neighborhoods through a multimodal type of transportation, how do we take into consideration the safety of having vehicles as well as pedestrians, as well as bikes through the various parts of the city and making sure that all, all citizens are safe regardless of which type of transportation they're participating in on our streets and on our areas? Also, safety concerns regarding additional streetlights, citywide streetlight replacements. These are usually more of the, they could be as much as one streetlight in one particular neighborhood or one row of streetlights in a particular neighborhood, something that makes it more safe. Also, the rusted street poles is another safety project. These are citywide issues that we look at. Staff looks at these on a citywide basis, has money set aside to take care of these particular issues. They're not necessarily identified at the beginning of the year, they're identified throughout the year on an as-needed basis, and that's our kind of third area for neighborhood and safety. This is a map, just to kind of show you on the reconstruct area. This is a map that the Transportation Department included in their department presentation when they came to you to talk about street maintenance. This does not, this represents more than what we have identified as critical needs in the upcoming years, that critical needs have been scaled down a little bit to try to fit within a smaller package. But it does show you some of the priorities within the city of reconstruct needs within the city, and you can see that it is kind of citywide. It does cross all the different areas of the city, different areas that we would need to spend more money on the operations and maintenance if we don't go back and do the full reconstructs that are due at this time, or actually overdue at this particular time. Pulling this all together, the staff recommendation for critical projects for the next possible general obligation bond election would be a total of $32.4 million in our public safety category and $72.8 million in our streets category for a total, total general obligation between the two questions of $105.2 million. That's the basis of the presentation, but we're open to any questions, discussions that we'd like to have against this.
Questions, comments? Yeah, Councilman Glover.
No, just, I concur with my colleague, Councilmember Kavanaugh, when it comes to police for at least the range securement and then for the remodel of the jail. I view those more as necessities than wants, and I think that the sooner we get those done, the better.
Okay, anything else? I'd like to talk to you before Thursday on some things, because I think there's some, and I, first of all, I appreciate the fact that I think staff has really tried to pare this down to what we would say critical, both in, in mission and also critical in timing, as far as taking an economic look and recognizing that there are times when buying or building is much more economical than continuing to try and stretch more out. I, I appreciate the fact that you've looked hard about that, and I know, I can see in some of these things, especially like with the streets, we don't realize that when we, when we forget or when we defer maintenance on many of our streets, boy, when they start crumbling, they fall apart real fast. And we've seen that. I mean, I have a street next to my house, or near my house, and I'm looking to see if it's on there. Can't remember if it is or not. That is, I mean, every time we get a sprinkle, this, the street just completely, it's full of potholes, and it's obvious that the under thing is just gone, and it needs to be taken care of. And I can see that that happens. I may, want to talk to you a little bit more, because I think there's some items, we've had a couple mentioned here, that we may want to include in that, and maybe if we're going to do this, I would like to make sure that we include everything. I know you had to draw the line a certain place, but maybe on a few of the things, two of the, few of the street projects and everything, maybe we want to move that line a little bit, and we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that, though, in particular, yeah.
On the street projects, Dan, does that come from your computerized program of all the streets in the city? How do you, how do you choose which street ended up on this criticalness factor?
Mayor, Councilwoman Higgins, we do, we do maintain a database on all of our street conditions. It's, we survey periodically throughout the entire year. So this is our, this is a list, if you look at the map, that represents a need of about $37 million. These are streets that are in disrepair to the point where they can no longer be maintained. So we couldn't just scrape off the top and do a mill and overlay. About all we can do with these is a slurry, and that's really just a temporary measure. The cracks will come right back through, just kind of gluing it together for a little bit.
So, so it, it's generated by your overlay of the city on your database, and then you go out and check it out to make sure it's at that level, and then you pick from there kind of thing?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Vice Mayor?
I guess, I just want to make sure that it's not random, you just don't go, oh, that's my street by my house, we're fixing it. No, it's something you keep track of, and you're pretty on top of it.
Certainly, some streets are worse than others, but these are all the streets we would like to address right now, provided that we have the money.
Great, thank you.
With regard, Mayor, if I could, with regard to the two intersections of Southern and Country Club and Southern and, what was the other one?
Stapling.
Stapling. I know there was quite a bit of a safety concern there. Did those make it to the last cut? I can't really tell from reading this, or did any one?
No, Vice Mayor, they didn't. And the biggest challenge there was, they had a safety concern, but one of them was, they came in big packages.
Large dollar projects.
One was 15 million and one was 10?
There was an 18, right?
There's, they're very large.
It was tough for us to spend that sum of money in one intersection, and while there were a lot, you know, the statistics and concerns there, but $15 million is, could be spread out to do a lot of other project across the city. That's how we balanced that out, and that was a tough call for us, frankly, it was the last one. But yeah, it was, it was there, but, and then, and then one of, of the projects, there's actually some, is it federal dollars or?
Yeah, it's a highway safety group.
But it's still, we would still be having to bond over 10-plus million dollars just for one project, one intersection.
Well, that's interesting, because that gives us an idea of your thought process. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Thursday, Mr. Brady sent out his weekly report, and with that included another project, something apart from the city projects, that has to do with the Spring Training Museum that folks who have put together our partnership with Play Ball have talked about. And I'm, I know it's rather, it's late in the process, but what I'd hope is that City Manager and his staff could at least sit down again and more closely look at the proposal because the, the costs associated with that have a fairly wide range, and I'm hoping that, that with our critical eye looking at it, we can have perhaps a more precise idea of what costs might be involved in that for when, when and if the council will take up discussion of that one.
Okay, did it on Thursday? Have that for you for Thursday?
That would be really appreciated.
Okay, yes. We'll get to that.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
And Dan, I'll follow up with you on a couple of things that I don't see in magenta, but I know this map isn't perfect, but I'd like to talk to you, because they are, you know, that one street that I was talking about is not on, in magenta, but I, it's, I know we're paying a lot of money because it falls apart every time it rains, so. And I know there's a lot of those around the city, and we had to make, had to make some cuts, so. Okay, any other questions?
I don't think this is residential streets.
No, no, this is an arterial. This is, this is an arterial we're talking about. It is a big street, not a small street.
Mr. Brady's got that.
It is a big street.
What's that? They won't, they won't even.
Yeah, there's, there's two, there's two big streets.
You, you see it stops right in front of my house, everything goes black behind.
Mine looks good.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Mr. Silver's next ball call.
Yeah, I know better.
Yeah, but last time we had a snowstorm, they plowed, they plowed your street first. I remember that.
Yeah.